They got me in the past for the.
And I told him, if you get a tip first to put a third.
The following Thursday or Tuesday?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
It's like, it's like.
I was gonna say, nothing to.
Exactly.
Put my hand over his side and one of the dog. That's very sad.
Yeah, no.
No, it's blue. It makes tremendous difference.
I said, no, that's one year.
Gentlemen, how you doing?
Good.
Fieldstones and someanos. And I said to my wife, I said, how you doing? I had too much to drink. I said, no, I didn't have.
And he didn't. He was a little bit more.
Finally, I got her on and waited.
You know, everything worked out.
You got the search of kind of.
Yeah.
But she was.
I was over my daughter's house the other day.
I kind of.
I put my hand over his side and he was great and I put my hand over.
Set a glass.
Ooh.
Oh, good luck tomorrow.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
No, I don't speak. I just go sit there. I said, I gotta have a speaking pass.
Oh, yeah.
How you doing?
I've asked a few people so far.
Yeah, I don't wanna put in time. Not worth that. I didn't forget it.
I don't forget it.
Okay, Brenda Jenkins, could you give the invocation, please?
I'm Brenda Jenkins from Crossroads Community Church. Will you please bow your head and join me in prayer? Dear wise and loving Father, first let us say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself and for the measure of health we need to fulfill our callings, for provisions and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you also for the freedom to embrace you and the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray that our city manager, our mayor, and for various levels of city officials, and in particular for the assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interest and issues of our times. That you would give them a sense of welfare for the needs of our people. Bless them with a keen thirst for your justice and righteousness. May they stand strong and true in your confidence in what is good, true, and fitting. Giving them the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Fulfill their hearts with peace in their lives and join in their task of steering the direction of our great city of Freeport. Also, Father, as our nation finds itself in yet another highly divisive election season. Our tendencies can be to draw from lines within ourselves based on which candidates we support. And that in turn lead to personal dislike for one another, anger towards those who lead, and eventually division. We are to live in a fine balance standing for which is true while seeking unity amongst ourselves wherever possible. Standing firm in the faith while showing grace to those who do not hold our leaders accountable while praying for their wisdom and well-being. Father, we pray for wisdom for our voters and a safe and fair election. Proverbs 3:21 through 23. My sons, do not let wisdom and understanding out of your sight. Preserve sound judgment and discretion. They will be your life for you, an ornament of grace that grace your neck. Then you will go on your way and it's safe and your foot will not stumble. And again, Proverbs 3:21 through 23. Heavenly Father, we just ask that you stir the hearts of your people on a local and national level to express their right to vote tomorrow. We pray for the agenda set before us tonight for our leaders. We give them assurance what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Freeport. It's in your blessed name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Brenda. And now that it's six o'clock, we'll officially call this meeting to order. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alder Person's Clem.
Here.
McLanathan.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Busker.
Here.
Brasshaw.
Here.
Keister.
Here.
And Chesney.
Here.
And if you could please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Ross.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So first is the approval of the agenda. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Clem. All those in favor of the approval of the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Item number two is the approval of the minutes from October 15th, 2018. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Busker for the approval of the minutes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. Public comments. We don't have anyone signed up, but I know that Lee Butler had a few things that he wanted to mention. Do you want to do that now, Lee, or do you want to wait to the end? Wait? Okay. Then we will move on to item number four, which is the consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature unless there is a member of the council that would like to have something removed for further discussion. Is there any item that needs to be removed? Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of the approval to receive and place on file the Greater Freeport Partnership Monthly Report to the Council. Minutes from the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting September 6th. The Building Commission meeting September 12th. Planning Commission meeting September 13th. Historical Preservation Commission meeting September 6th. Firefighters Pension Fund Board of Trustees from July 26th. Minutes from the Council Workshop, October 3rd. And the Police Department Reports, June, July, and August 2018. The City of Freeport's Annual Treasure Report, May 1st, 2017 through April 30th, 2018. The Proclamation for National Apprenticeship Week from November 12th through the 16th, 2018. Cash and Investment Report for September 30th. Financial Reports for the General Fund, Library Fund, Water Fund, Sewer Fund, Storm Sewer Fund for September 2018. Also is B, the approval of the finance bills payable in the total of $1,334,592.96. And the approval of payroll for a pay period ending October 13th, 2018 in the total of $574,091.61. As well as the payroll for October 27th, 2018 in the total of $564,893.18. Is there a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Ross. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the approval of the consent agenda?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
And McLanathan.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number five is the presentation of the fiscal year 2017-2018 Audit Report by Andrew Mace from Klein Hall. Andrew, if you'd like to join us.
Thank you. We have completed and filed the audit with the State Comptroller's Office. I'll be brief with this rather lengthy document. It's 140 pages long. Governmental financial reporting is rather lengthy. We've gone over this in quite detail with the Finance Committee. Couple of things I like to point out is that we conducted our audit in accordance with general accepted auditing standards as well as government auditing standards because you receive federal funds. And it is our opinion that these financial statements are presented fairly in conformity with general accepted accounting principles. So it's a big mouthful, but what it means is that you've got a clean audit opinion and everything is presented in conformity with standards. Now, if you didn't want to read the whole 140 pages, I would suggest you just look at the Management's Discussion and Analysis section on pages three to 11. There, it shows there's some summary financial information and explanations of significant financial occurrences and variance analyses that occurred during the year. There's a lot of entity-wide information here that I think has a tendency to be somewhat confusing. It includes all long-term assets and liabilities, including the Police and Fire Pension Fund, net pension liabilities, which went up this year as a result of some changes in actuarial assumptions. But you live and you manage and budget on the fund level. And so just a couple of comments about your funds. If you looked on page 20, that shows the results of operations on your funds for the year. Shows your revenues and expenditures and ending fund balances. So one common barometer on the financial health of a city would be to compare your ending fund balances with a year's worth of operating expenditures. And you're about one-third. You have about one-third of fund balances compared to operating expenditures. That's what I like to call kind of in that Goldilocks area, not too high, not too low. You know, you don't want to accumulate too much, but you need some monies there to respond to changing circumstances and the like. And I think you're right there. Other items of note, there's budgetary statements in great detail in the back. And bottom line is that you set out your financial plan and you adhere to it. You did not overexpend your budget. Everything lined up very nicely there. So all kinds of pages of footnotes related to debt and retirement plans and other post-employment benefits, et cetera. The city has continued to pay down some debt. There were a couple of new issuances this year. There are some new automotive leases that reflected in this year's report. But everything is really in good order and normal operating. Operationally, you know, this is the first year we did your audit. We couldn't have been happier with the cooperation and expertise and professionalism displayed by the Finance Office. We had very few audit adjustments. The audit adjustments we did have were not correcting in nature, but more just to get things in alignment with GAAP so that it's in the format that we need to report. So things are really, really doing a good job there. We didn't have any audit findings that were required to be reported in accordance with the Single Audit Act or anything that we consider to be material weakness or significant deficiency. We had a couple of little housekeeping suggestions that we discussed with the administration. And I think you've already, if not implemented, or close to having all that implemented already. Additionally, we issued a couple of other reports. I mentioned the Fed Funds, so we issue what we call a single audit report where we look at compliance with laws and regs related to the expenditure of your federal funds. There's a report on your TIF, compliance with the TIF laws for the five TIFs that the city has. There's a couple of other compliance reports related to the Downstate Operating Assistance Program and the 5311 Grant reimbursement. And then finally, what we call an agreed-upon procedures report related to adherence to the EPA Rule 40. In all those reports, we had no findings. Everything is being conducted as it should be, and we find everything in good order. So I think that's a pretty positive report. I think the city is doing a really excellent job with the minimal resources that you have, so. That's it. Are there any questions for me?
Mayor.
Chesney.
Do we need to receive and place this on file?
It's on the agenda.
It's the last item. Oh, okay. Thanks.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you for your work and thank you for the presentation. It was good to see the very limited amount of suggestions that you had based on or compared to some previous years of that nature. So I was glad to see that. I guess just like a comment, and while reviewing the paperwork put together, as you hit on a couple of the reasons behind it. But looking at the adjustment downward in regards to the estimated return, and we're talking pensions as well as, I think, some retirements. It is putting, it looks like it is putting some pressure for us to know we need to make sure we're keeping an eye on down the road. So thank you for, first of all, Finance Director, and then also for the compilation of it, the review of it. I think it's something that we always need a kind of a reminder on it. Like you say, we operate here in the front end, but we can't lose track of the long-term obligations that are coming down the road, so.
That's right.
Thank you for your work.
You're welcome. Thank you. It's a pleasure.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you. Pleasure working with the city.
We will move on to item number six, which is the second reading of Ordinance 201852. Madam Clerk, could you please read this for the record?
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the City of Freeport regarding building regulations.
Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the, this was reviewed at, first at, by the Building Commission, then reviewed by council. At the committee of the whole, first reading, we did have one change come out of first reading, which we made that adjustment to put the fees for the boiler inspection to $15. And these put us in compliance with current accepted codes. And it's been the first review that has been done in approximately 10 years. And we've adopted, we're recommending adoption of this to bring us up within code compliance with the international building codes.
Any questions, Mayor? Alderman Chesney.
Thank you. Alder Person Brasshaw made note of this before the meeting, that there's language that says that the fees are going to go up 7% a year. Now, I don't recall, as long as I've been on the council, and Tom, maybe you can weigh in on this, is while I think our ordinances have suggested fee increases, I don't know that we have ever done it. Have we?
Not that I can, when you say the fees, you're talking the fees for permits.
That's right.
Et cetera? No, I don't believe so. I mean, it could have possibly been there, but had it ever been done, you know, the last couple of years, we reduced them tremendously on, as far as we raised the limit as far as what you could do with no permit. But I don't know as if we really adjusted any fees or anything, but.
And that language in itself was taken over from the original codes. We did not change it from that. And you are correct, we had not raised the fees in accordance with the ordinance.
Mayor.
Well, I just think that our practice should reflect our ordinance, and we should probably clean up that language. If we haven't accelerated the fees, we probably should come back to the Building Commission. If they have a recommendation for higher fees, then I don't know that we should have just automatic escalators. We've never done it in the past, and if we're not following it, I don't see any reason why we should have it in there today.
So you'd like to see that as going back to the commission to see their opinion on it?
Just that, just that piece, Mayor. If we haven't raised the fees 7%, automatically year over year, I know we haven't done it in the four years I've been here, and Tom's been here 10, you know, 10 years, 7%. That could be, you know, that can go up pretty quick.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
I think one thing we did do is, I believe a few years ago, we actually adjusted some of the permit fees down, didn't we?
Correct.
We did. You know, so if it doesn't make any difference if it's prolonged a week or whatever, otherwise we could just make an amendment, whichever would work the best for the mayor and the manager.
What my recommendation is to go ahead and strike that so we get these building codes on, or because we're not right now currently in compliance with the, at least with the energy codes that are dictated by the state. This gets into that compliance. It also brings in, eliminates vocal codes. It puts us on the international building codes standards. And then I'll take this back to the building. As the chairman of the Building Commission, I'll take this, that particular line. So my recommendation is go ahead and amend this, to strike that line and take it back to the Building Commission if that's approved by the council.
Mayor. Alderman Chesney.
I'd make a motion that we strike language. The license fee imposed by this section shall be increased by 7% on May 1 of each year.
Second.
Is there, is there a number that's associated with that?
It's in 1428-08. And in 1422.
Yeah, 1422.10 as well. Mm-hmm.
Andrew.
Andrew made the motion, and who was the second?
Busker.
Or Parker. Or you.
Okay, so counsel before you is a motion for an amendment to strike the line concerning the 7% increase, which is attached to 1428-08 and 142210. That motion's made by Alderman Chesney, seconded by Alderman Busker. Is there any further discussion on that particular amendment alone? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the amendment only?
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
That pass is eight to zero.
So now, before you counsel, is the amended version of 201852. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on that passage?
Alder Person Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
And the ordinance is adopted.
Thank you. Next is item number seven, which is the first reading of Ordinance 201854. Could you please read this?
An ordinance amending a policy prohibiting sexual harassment for City of Freeport, which is a state mandated update.
Thank you. Manager Crowe.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The state passed an additional amendment to their sexual harassment policy extending the period of reporting from 180 days to 300 days after the incident or after the employee departs the municipality. This changes the ordinance as well as our policy for sexual harassment to reflect this change that has been passed as a state requirement for municipalities.
Discussion.
Mayor.
Alderman Brasshaw.
Thank you. Manager Crowe, so this, in your opinion, is just a housekeeping matter?
It is.
And is there any urgency to comply with this immediately?
There, this, we have to have it adopted by the 1st of December, so we have some time to do this. It's a simple modification within the ordinance. If you wanted to suspend the rules, that would put us in compliance with the state.
Mayor.
Alderman Brasshaw.
Motion to suspend the rules to expedite this off of our agenda.
Second.
Gotta put it on the floor first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Has to go on the floor first. Please forgive me.
So is there a motion to move Ordinance 201854 forward?
So moved.
Second.
So we have a motion made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Keister to move Ordinance 201854 forward. And we have a motion to suspend the rules made by Alderman Brasshaw, seconded by Alderman Parker. Suspension of the rules is non-debatable and must pass by a two-thirds majority. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the suspension of the rules?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
And McLanathan.
Aye.
Suspension of the rules passes eight to zero.
Thank you. So counsel now before you is the final reading for Ordinance 201854. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role on the passage?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brasshaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
And McLanathan.
Aye.
And the ordinance is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Item number eight is the adoption of Resolution R 201851. Madam Clerk, could you please read this?
A resolution of the City of Freeport authorizing the city to sell surplus city real property, which is a parking lot on Spring Street and various lots on Main Street.
And Manager Crowe, or is that Director Zupkoff?
Director Zupkoff.
Thank you, Your Honor and City Manager. This resolution would declare five parcels as surplus property and allow the city to sell them. A company approached the city about purchasing the parking lot located next to Oddfellows, noting they intend to keep using that property as a parking lot if they purchase it for the additional four City Lights parcels. A developer represented by U.S. banks interested in purchasing and building at that location. We, as a city, currently have no additional plans to utilize these properties. Selling the properties generates additional revenue for the city, and in the case of the City Lights properties, could even lead to new construction in Freeport. We request approval from the City Council of this resolution. Thank you.
Questions?
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
I just got one piece of information I'd like to know how we're going to handle. I assume that it's going to stay on the TIF list, so on and so forth, but the debt that is on the Germania property that we pay every year. I'm sorry.
The property on the Germania property.
The Germania property has a debt on it that we inherited through one of our mayors from the Chamber of Commerce that we pay on every year. What happens to that debt?
I believe that debt is just part of our general obligation with U.S. Bank. And what I would look to do is, any money we generate was pay off that debt. There's not that much left, and I think there's three years left on that, on that note.
Okay. I just wanted to, you know, so we knew upfront what was going to happen. Thank you.
And these properties will be appraised. I have an appraiser set up as soon as it's approved, and we'll be selling them for the 80% value since we've been approached on specific, by specific people to sell those properties at that.
Madam Mayor. Alderman Chesney.
Thank you. Well, before we sell these, are we going to have conditions that if there is construction that is intended construction, are we going to have any parameters, any deed restriction that, you know, triggers a first right of refusal or the ability to take back possession? Because we just don't simply want to transfer these lots at a low dollar amount and just have it sit unless that's the initial plan. So are they, is there going to be some negotiations on building something and an idea or scope?
So this is strictly to declare them in surplus so we can then get them appraised and then start negotiations. And when I get those. And when I get those negotiations done, and I will bring back that approval for Counsel, and, and I'll put the, make sure that those deed restrictions are placed.
Good deal. Thanks.
Mayor.
McLanathan.
Thank you. Director, I understand on the, the four lots that are kind of next, next to each other, you indicated that the proposed use for the one by Oddfellows is gonna be consistent with the city use. What's kind of the rationale or thought process on making that surplus as well?
My understanding, from when the company reached out that wants to purchase it, they have an office near there, and, and I believe they want to use it for their, their, their own private use as a parking lot.
Once they own it, they can actually put towing restrictions on it and secure down the parking spots. We've, I've had a discussion with Attorney Cox about that, is it, and also Chief Barcalow, that once they post that, then they can enforce the no parking within that area. But they have to own the lot to do that.
Sure.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
If I could, well, one of the things are, either one here. As we look at that, the lot by the Oddfellows, as we know, the Oddfellows was just purchased on a tax sale. So is there any thing that they would be interested in? You know, I, it's not that I don't want to sell it to Guy X, but I don't want to limit Guy Z also. Just a question, you know?
Well, it was purchased by a company on, out in South Carolina off the tax sale. And we, we haven't reached out to them. Initially, we had been working a deal last year for the person that wanted to purchase the Oddfellows that fell through, that resulted in a tax sale to combine those two properties into one. But we wouldn't, you know, this is an opportunity we, we saw just to take this property. The Public Works Director also likes it because then he, he's not responsible for plowing snow in the, in that parking lot any longer.
Right. Does, does the person that bought it for taxes realize what they bought yet?
Well, I went by it, you're talking about Oddfellows, I went by it today. They're actually boarding up and fixing, painting the sides of the building and fixing the windows, so.
Okay, thank you. That was my only concern there, but I completely understand with the lots, what was mentioned. You know, guess what? We don't have to maintain them anymore, we don't have to plow snow, we don't have to refinish blacktop or whatever, you know, so. As long as there's a need for it and it's productive for the city, it's a good opportunity.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Chesney, for the adoption of resolution twenty eighteen fifty-one. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Nine.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
And that is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is item number nine, which is the adoption of resolution twenty eighteen fifty-two. Could you please read this?
Resolution of the City of Freeport approving a redevelopment agreement regarding property located at seven thirty-one Midwest Court in Freeport, known as Frank's Car Wash.
Thank you. Director Zepkov.
Thank you, Your Honor. The developer of this project, Jay Smith, who is in the audience tonight, has owned this business Frank's Car Wash for approximately seven years. He's decided now to make significant improvements to his business with the proposed improvements outlined in this redevelopment agreement. Mr. Smith says he hopes to offer his customers the best and latest in car wash technology that's also more energy efficient and environmentally friendly than his current equipment. Jay reached out to city staff in the past few months to see if there might be tax increment finance or TIF money available to assist with his redevelopment project. And according to Exhibit C of the RDA, the TIF eligible expenses of this project are nearly sixty-five thousand dollars. However, those TIF eligible expenses are part of a much bigger redevelopment project at the car wash detail than Exhibit D of the RDA. The total project totals over three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Staff believes Mr. Smith's financial investment into his business will be of benefit to the West Avenue TIF district and the City of Freeport as a whole. We request approval from the City Council of this RDA and that the payment of ten thousand dollars be made within forty-five days after the city's performed a final inspection of the developer project, certified that all developer project worked has been completed satisfactorily to the city, and that developers eligible redevelopment project costs have been authenticated, and that's all noted in the RDA. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions?
Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Director Zepkov, I'm not sure if I understand this correctly. Sixty-five thousand dollars are qualified for TIF expense, but we are only to forward ten thousand?
Yes. There was, there was some negotiation from what the developer originally wanted, and, and we discussed with him, and we ended up at that, that figure for the, for the city share of the project.
So we also have a couple other, RDA is already in existence within this TIF that we all increment as we go forward. So what we looked at was what we have in the account versus what, what is owed for the other developments. And that's where we came upon the ten thousand number.
Follow-up, Mayor. Manager Crowe, is there any possibility that it could be readdressed if there are funds available for this specific project, for additional funding?
So once, once the project starts and it gets going, we don't, the way I like to do redevelopment agreements, and I think Attorney Zito does, is we pre-negotiate these ahead of time, and then that's a set figure so we know what, how to, we can go forward with our budget so we can properly budget what our requirements are. We, we don't typically back, at least I don't typically negotiate into backfill for expenditures that have already occurred.
That's perfectly understandable. I wasn't looking for the backfilling, I was just wondering if there would be other funding available. After all, we want to make sure this car wash is up and running and that the darn dollar bill changers will accept my wrinkled dollar bills that they wouldn't take today. So I'm hoping he'll look into that. Thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Thanks. Well, how did we arrive at ten thousand dollars? Because my understanding is, is that if we're gonna be doing a redevelopment agreement, this would, in theory, generate more increment in the future. I, I, I'm not an appraiser, but I, I don't know that adding panels and garage doors is going to generate any increment at all. So what's the, what's the thought process of, I mean, generally, we add square footage or we, we, we have a justification for increasing the, or giving, giving a redevelopment agreement in exchange for increasing future increment. It looks like in this particular redevelopment agreement, we're just buying somebody's stuff for their business.
Well, we, we felt that, as we went forward, that the additional machines that he's putting in there, while they're not specifically called out within, those machine, the, those new car washing machines he's putting in, that will increase the value of the buildings. However, those are not authorized to be paid for with TIF, as we looked at it, as I had Attorney Zito look at it. So his initial, his total investment is three hundred and fifty thousand in the building to increase the operation and improve the value of that building. So that's what we looked at when we looked at, at what the overall, we believe, increment was. You know, whether or not that actually generates that increment, you know, I, I can't say because, you know, the, I will tell you, the Aspen Dental and caught, in the coffee shop has only generated twenty-three thousand dollars in increment for as much of the improvement of the, as they've done in that building. So based upon the appraisals that are going, in, in particular, within those districts.
Follow-up, Mayor.
My understanding, though, is while there is an overall investment of over three hundred thousand dollars, the, for the purposes of our discussion, the redevelopment project is sixty-four thousand five ninety-seven. My question is, is, from an administrative level, what is the justification for those sixty-four thousand dollars on how giving ten thousand dollars is gonna generate any increment? Or is this just one of these that maybe, you know, they forgot to ask for at the three hundred thousand dollars, and now we're gonna buy their toys and just?
No, they, they came in to initially to ask us about three hundred thousand. He did not do was, two years ago, he increased the size, I think it was two or three years ago, increased the size of the car wash, and he did not approach the city at that point. And that did increase his value in, in that point. He didn't, he did not approach the city. So this time, with the additional costs and the new facilities that he's putting in, he had approached us, and we looked at that and felt that, that there would be an overall increase in the value of the property.
And we've talked to an appraiser, and adding four new garage doors or, to service bays and replacing new paneling and the installation of vinyl siding is going to increase the increment.
Yes, I do believe, and I have talked to an appraiser, I've talked to Tony Harris about this.
Mayor.
Alderman Busker. Alderman Keister, sorry.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Brashaw, for the adoption of resolution twenty eighteen fifty-two. Could you please take the role?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
No.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry. Thank you. That passes seven to one.
And next is item number ten, which is the adoption of resolution twenty eighteen fifty-three. Director Sutman.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to enter into a contract with U.S. Cellular to provide cellular and data services. This will be a second provider for us, and I believe it gives us the flexibility to choose the right service to go with the right need and product.
The, the overall savings from this is?
I projected five thousand a year, but there will be an increase in service for a number of our staff.
Mayor Miller.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Will these be all the handheld cellphones then for our staff and administration staff?
For most of them, it will be, probably ninety-five percent.
The ones, there will be a few that are being changed, won't be changed out, those who do a lot of travel outside of the area. What we found is that the coverage for U.S. Cellular is much better. The Police Department and Fire Department have been testing these for the last month, and they were getting much better coverage throughout the city at a cheaper cost.
Mayor, I have an additional question. I'm trying to remember where my line of thought was going with this. I see that for the fiscal year twenty nineteen, the City of Freeport IT Department had budgeted the twenty-seven thousand two hundred and fourteen for cellular voice and data services provided by Verizon Wireless. So you'd already budgeted for Verizon, so we can just switch that over to U.S. Cellular for that portion?
If, I guess it was, it was more so budgeted for cellular wireless connection services, not necessarily Verizon. That just happened to be our sole carrier.
So that's why it was listed here, then?
Yes.
So there's no conflict to switch over?
There's no conflict. We actually went out, we wanted to make sure because Verizon also has the state contracts. So we made, before we made this shift, we were actually gonna bring this forward to you a couple months ago, but I gave Kurt some additional task orders to make sure it didn't violate it. Because the, we have some machine-to-machine that are under the Verizon contract, and we wanted to make sure that it didn't cost us on the machine-to-machine, which are, where it are carried in the police cars, and some of the other things that we're using Verizon for, and determined, talking with them, having Attorney Zito review the contract, we're not in violation of any of those, and this brings a saving to the city.
One more follow-up, Mayor, if I may? Thank you. And so has Verizon been apprised of this, that we may be leaving them, and have they had a chance to bid out a lower price?
They have given me their, what they stated was their lowest price, and it was my understanding, talking with all the different vendors, that it's commonplace to not really have to tell them that you're moving. We, we aren't moving all of our services away from only cellular, phone, voice.
I'm not against going to U.S. Cellular, and if it can save money, I'm all for it. I just wanted to ask that question. Thank you.
Mayor.
Alderman Keister.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Brashaw, for the approval of resolution twenty eighteen fifty-three. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
That resolution is adopted eight to zero.
Thank you.
And item number eleven is the approval of bids for the opening on October twenty-fourth for PW dash zero zero two eighteen for surplus personal property. Director Carr.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Is, if you guys all can kind of go back almost a year now, back in January, we had our first surplus resolution passed. And then after a long wait, we had one, then again, the first council in October. After that, we had our bid opening on the twenty-fourth. We placed forty-six items, or I guess lots of items, on surplus. And of those forty-six items, there were only six that we did not receive a bid on. Of the forty that we sold, three were Police Department vehicles, nine items came from the water and sewer, and the rest came from the Public Works. Came to a grand total of eleven thousand four hundred and nineteen dollars. We had six bidders. Each of the bidders actually were the high bidder on an item that they bid out. Upon the City Council's approval of the high bid for each vehicle and piece of equipment, I will contact the successful bidder and arrange time for them to remove the equipment and vehicles from Old City Hall, the city yards, and also the Hancock Street facility.
Questions?
Mayor.
Alderman Busker.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion on the approval of the bids?
Mayor.
Alderman Chesney.
Thank you. Director, what's the process for the items that haven't been bid on? Is there a way that you have more flexibility now that we've gone through a formal bidding process to eliminate these?
For?
Issues?
When, when we had these six items that were not bid on, another item actually came to our attention because we have several hundred parking meters in Old City Hall. If you guys remember when we had originally set up the, the surplus, there was a motion to take those away from the sealed bid process because there was an online website, which I believe was eBay. Due to the weight of each of the meters, as well as the manpower it would take to run four hundred auctions, we will be bringing another surplus with a sealed bid proposal that will be a little bit, a little more flexible on price per, per unit request. And at that point in time, we will bring it to just an open auction or a sealed bid auction on the other items with any item that does not, just gets disposed of.
And we've actually been approached by a couple city employees about purchasing this, and I, the items that were not listed, four scrapped, some of them have been scrapped. And I approached, I think he's been called on a lot tonight, Attorney Zito, about how to do it. And his feeling was the best way to put it, put it back on the sealed bid with the other items we're gonna go forward with and allow them. Because we did have some city employees that did bid on the equipment and have, and purchased that equipment. And they only, after they saw the equipment, and they saw that no one bid on it, they, they approached us. But the best way to do that, and covers from all bases, is to have them get bid on it.
There seems to be one item that I have not gotten any interest on. So there could possibly be one item left over from this next process. So we'll try to write in the bid spec or the resolution on how we will deal with that moving forward.
Thank you. Good work.
Okay, so before you, is a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman McLanathan, for the approval of the bids. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero.
Item number 12 is the approval of bids for the opening on October 30th for CD-01018, demolition of residential properties. Director Zupkov.
Thank you, Your Honor. Last month, we put the demolition of 18 properties out for bid. That 18 turned to 17 when we found out one of the properties, 834 East Shawnee, is still owned by a local nonprofit organization, and that one won't be awarded for demolition as part of this process. We had the bid opening for this last week, on October 30th, and we received five bids for the demolition of these properties. Because city funds allocated for demolitions are limited right now, we did ask the bidders to hold their bids until the end of our current fiscal year, April 30th of 2019, and the demolitions will be conducted as money becomes available. We request approval of this action item to accept the bids received for demolition with awards of the properties to bidders to come at a later date. Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Clem.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. Director, are we anticipating at that later dates? Looking through the figures, there's some that are low on one, some that are low on the others, that will be taking the individual little bidder up per property?
Yeah, these will be awarded on an individual basis, that's right.
All right, thank you.
And the total cost, so once we take little bidders, is $135,245, which you know this is lower than the combined lower bids, so by about seven or eight thousand, yeah.
Mayor.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. What funding are we looking to use for this? Are we looking for the grant funding, the city funding, where are we at?
So, we have a couple grant requests out right now. We did not receive this year's APP grant, so what we do is, we have a couple other grants that are out there that we're working with, we're waiting to see the final award on those. That was for $350,000 going forward. We additionally are using money for the sale of, that we get in for the sale of properties as we go forward, and identifying other sources of revenue as we go forward in this. And the idea is to get these properties demoed. We are also working with Region One Planning Council to put in for two, one additional grant that we have, as of right now.
And if I can add, the maximum award for the one we're working with on Region One would be a maximum award of $250,000. That's abandoned property program around four, so if we are awarded, which hopefully we will, and we're giving the full amount, that would pay for the demolition of all of these, and then some additional, so we're hopeful for that.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. Manager Crowe, have we been compensated for all the grants in the past that we had written for? I saw you kind of do a double take there.
No, we have not. We're still working through some additional processes with Illinois Housing Authority. I don't have the right...
Illinois Housing Development Authority, Ida.
Yeah, we've been going back and forth with our documents. We filed two additional documents today that I signed out to go to them, but we still have about $350,000 outstanding due to us.
No, I see why you gave me that look. Sorry to poke you there, but I was wondering if that was one of the holdups on the teardowns as well. Thank you.
Okay, so before you is a motion made by Alderman Clem, seconded by Alderman Ross for the approval of the bids. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
And McLanathan.
Aye.
That passes eight to zero.
And item number 13 is a motion to accept and place on file the fiscal year 201718 audit and associated documents.
So move.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
Thank you. I just want to thank Director Bukas from the entire City Council, the City Mayor and the City Manager for doing such a fine job as our finance director. And this is my third term as an alderperson, and this is probably one of the best outcomes I've seen so far, so thank you.
Thank you. I would like to give credit to my staff, they're very good and they're very diligent in what they do.
Okay, so we have a motion made by Alderman Keister, seconded by Alderman Busker for the acceptance and place on file. Madam Clerk, could you please take the roll?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
And McLanathan.
Aye.
Passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next is Department head reports, Finance.
Thank you, Ryan, I really have nothing to report tonight.
Mayor.
McLanathan.
Based on that report, no. I do have a question, though. Looking in the consent agenda and looking at the finance reports, the five-month snapshot on the year, I noticed the general fund expenses were slightly below budget, although I think by 1% from what we needed, or where we're at at this point. I did see that the revenues were lagging a little bit. What level of concern should we have at this stage, particularly looking at the two main states tax, or the two main sources there that we have, that it's, I think one was like 30%, one was 35%, or somewhere in that neighborhood? Is this just a part of the natural fluctuation that we see annually, or is this something we should be keeping a closer eye on as we move forward?
No, actually, it's more of an annual type thing. This time of year, we're getting our property taxes in, and this does not reflect the last property tax payment either. Very little of our property tax actually goes to the general fund, but little does help, and we're also looking at our, sales tax has been going up as well.
Okay.
So, I watch it very closely, and I appreciate your question, and we'll continue to monitor it.
Thank you.
Community Development.
Thank you, Your Honor, just a few things. The Planning Commission is meeting here at 5:30 PM this Thursday. They'll be hearing presentations from the three finalist planning firms wanting to work with the city on the development of our continental plan. The three firms are Ratio, House of Levine, and MSA. The City Council will receive a recommendation from the Planning Commission and staff, I had a later date on which of those firms to select. The Historic Preservation Commission and myself are holding a facade grant application workshop here also, next Tuesday, November 13th, at 7:30 AM. We've already had several people display interest in that, and they've let us know they plan to attend. And last month, in one of these reports, I mentioned we were awarded three new Dodge vans as part of our Consolidated Vehicle Program, or CVP, grant. Those were picked up on October 17th. They've been in the shop ever since, getting decorated accordingly with Pretzel City Transit decals, outfitted with radio equipment, and we're happy to say they were all just put into service today. And again, each of the three vans is valued at nearly $38,000. Thank you.
Public Works.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Our Polaris Brutus and our bucket truck are out of the shop, and we have them back at our garage now, so we will get the Polaris ready for the snowfall, and then our bucket truck, we can use to finally get down the Kiwanis Peanuts banner across Stevenson. As for the snow that they are calling for this weekend, we are going to be ready in all of our truck sets, we are not currently using for leaves with snow plows. They are calling for less than an inch, but any kind of fluctuation based off of their kind of forecasting could potentially mean more snow or no snow at all. So we are going to have as many trucks as we can ready for that. The North Ridgefield project has been finished. The only thing we have left to do on that is some seeding, which we won't be able to do until spring. The South Ridgefield project ran into some snags due to the occurrence of bedrock. The contractor is through the bedrock, but however, with all the rain that, from this past weekend and forecasted for this week, I don't expect any pipe to be laid there until at least it dries up. And then our concrete guys have been pretty busy on Pine Street. We have finished the north half near Homer, and will be continuing south, and hopefully have that finished by the end of next week. That's all I've got.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Alderman Brashaw.
So Director, we're expecting our first really, really heavy frost this coming week, like Friday, so you'll still be picking up leaves until when?
The last time we were going, the last round will begin the Monday after Thanksgiving. So, to all the homeowners out there, please have your leaves out by the weekend of Thanksgiving, because after that, once we're past your house, we apologize that we will not be coming back to get you.
Madam Mayor.
You'll be plowing them.
Alderman Chesney.
Thank you. Manager Crowe, is it possible, can we do an announcement of some kind on Facebook, perhaps an email blast for those that subscribe to our agenda, and anything we can do neighborhood watch-wise, because even though we probably have had the same timeframes year over year, it might be nice to just offer a little reminder.
Okay.
We'll do.
I believe also, Kelly, whenever she answers her however many phone calls a day, I believe she is reminding everybody of when we are finishing.
Thank you.
Fire.
Thank you, Mayor. This morning, we, the mayor swore in Ryan Thomas as a new firefighter. He started today. With that hire, that expires our current firefighter list, eligibility list, so the Board and Fire Police Commission has approved. We're going to start the process for hiring, and applications will be available starting Monday, November 12th, and running through December 21st. So, for the community out there, anybody local, we're looking for firefighters. That process will take us through the spring, and hopefully we have a list by the April timeframe.
Police.
Madam Mayor, thank you.
Alderman Parker, did you have something?
I had a question for him, I've had some questions. What is a minimum requirement for a firefighter to apply? What does he have to have?
It would be a GED or diploma. At the time of hire, we do require an EMT license, but they don't have to have that to apply, and also a CPAT card, it's C-P-A-T, which is, it takes the place of what the physical agility test would have been. And on our website, there will be, and on the application packet, there'll be places they can go to get that certification for, at the time of hire.
Thank you.
And also, 21 to 35 is the age limit.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, police.
Thank you. Friday, this last Friday, November 2nd, I attended the annual awards banquet down in East Peoria. It was the Illinois Metropolitan Law Enforcement Group Directors and Task Force Commanders Association. I was there to support my three men, Phil Banky, Eric Deemer, and Tim Krieger. They were recognized for the joint FBI investigation that I'm sure you're all aware of, which resulted in the seizure of 321 grams of cocaine, 55 grams of crack cocaine, 126 grams of heroin, 720 grams of cannabis, four guns, and $70,000 in cash, and the arrest warrants for nine individuals. So, I was down there, I was very happy for them and for our department. Also, November, this last Friday, November 2nd, you may have been notified, we did a search warrant, is there a residential house here? And my gang unit investigated that and initiated that search warrant, resulted in two arrests and two more handguns. That makes, for my gang unit, that makes 10 guns in the last, this last year, and 10 different individuals, 10 different gang members that they've arrested. So I'm very proud of those guys, they're making the streets much safer out there. So, that's a big milestone. I wanted also to thank the Fire Department for their help this last Wednesday for Halloween. It was a fun event. We were working the detail on Stevenson Street and Lincoln Boulevard. One last thing, I want to remind everybody that Wednesday, November 7th, this Wednesday, will be the civilian police graduation. You're all invited, anybody is invited to attend. We got, you know, over 20 applicants, they're going to be graduating that night. It's at the library at 6 o'clock, so please attend to that. Also, don't forget to vote tomorrow.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Busker.
Chief Barklow, have you seen any reduction in overdoses or any crime activity since the big drug bust?
Yeah, absolutely I have. In fact, we were talking to one of the FBI agents down there, and they actually talked, reached out to talk to one of their sources in Freeport, and they asked how it's been going, and they said it's tough to even buy some cigarettes now in Freeport. Now, I know that he was exaggerating, but we absolutely have seen a reduction. Yes, thank you for asking that.
IT? And City Manager.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Just a reminder, the 11th is Veterans Day, so City Hall will be closed on Monday, and recognition of that, the committee of the hall will be Tuesday at 6 o'clock, so just a reminder for... On the 19th, St. Paul's, the area churches are holding a day of Thanksgiving at St. Paul's at 7:00 PM. We are, I'm discussing with the mayor about moving the council meeting to 5:00 to allow, both she and I have been invited to speak at that event, so we will get more information out to the council on that. Heritage Arrow is moving in, has moved, started to move into the airport, and we've got an Air One. I want to thank chief and also the sheriff for their help in getting Air One. We've actually had to get the state law enforcement involved to get Air One out of our airport, but they are moving their equipment out, and Heritage Arrow is in, and we're making the modifications in the hangar to bring in those 12 new jobs and the new business into the airport, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Just to piggyback on both of the chiefs, it was my pleasure to swear in the firefighter this morning, always is a great moment here in City Hall. And Chief Barklow, totally agree, remind people to get out and vote tomorrow, it's important, totally agree. Saturday, the 27th downtown, we had our bootyful Saturday, and we had hundreds of kids that came for that, and it was a great event, and I was amazed at the amount of adults that came, and just hearing the conversations back and forth between them saying, wow, I didn't know this was all downtown. So, thank you to all those that are participating and making our city better. And also, the Salvation Army is beginning to get their bell ringers schedules together, so if anyone wants to ring the bell, get ahold of the Salvation Army, they would gladly take that. And also, the Friends of the Peck will be celebrating their 10th anniversary, and they invite each one of you to their celebration on Thursday, November 15th, at 6 o'clock at Rafter's. So if you'd like to avail yourself to that, they would appreciate that as well, so I believe it'd be Alderman Ross, are you first tonight?
Nothing at this time, Mayor.
And Alderman Parker?
The only thing is to tell the chief how very proud I am of the Police Department and what they did with that drug bust, and all the statistics you just gave, if I could get that from you later, because I couldn't write that fast, so...
You bet.
Thank you.
Alderman Busker.
I just kind of want to make sure everyone knows, go out and vote tomorrow and make your opinion known, so...
Alderman Brashaw.
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
Alderman Keister.
Just a couple real quick things, I would like to thank the financial director for your and your people's work on the financial report, or the audits, since, like I said, I've been here for a while, and I think this is the quickest I've ever seen it done. Usually it's after the first of the year, and I appreciate your efforts on that, and to thank the chief and his people for your efforts on that. We need to keep it that way and keep this town safer. And again, reflect what Alderman Busker said, go out and, if you haven't voted already, go out and vote tomorrow, it's a very important right, go do that. And Mayor, on your thing with the bell ringers, I have, I understand that Uncle Sam has been invited to ring bells either at ShopCo or Cub Food this year, and I have it on good authority that he will be there one of those days.
We're glad to hear that. Thank you, Uncle Sam. Alderman Chesney.
Thank you, Director. Mike kind of stole my idea, but, you know, for years, we have struggled obtaining, securing, and finalizing an audit. We have paid fines, we have gone through an arduous task that none of us want to go through again, so thank you so much. I think taxpayers want to know where their dollars are, and when we have an audit and a clean bill of health, I think that makes everybody feel more comfortable. While it's a boring read for many, it's very important, and it's hundreds of hours of your time and your staff's time to put... your time and your staff's time to put all the dollars and cents together, and I know that we have a lot of different accounts that you're trying to bring together and make some sense of it. Also, I think it's important to recognize some of the successes the City of Freeport has had. We kind of breeze over them at times. A few that come out to me are come to mind. One is, the airport is a big win for the city. We have, for almost 10 years, not had a, the hangars fully occupied. I think that this council, with the great work of Manager Crowe, has done a nice job at securing interest where interest wasn't in place in previous administrations. And the second is, I'm told that the spec house that was built, the first house that was built in nearly 10 years, is sold. So, for those that don't believe that you can't build and sell a house in Freeport are wrong. They're not saying that we're, everybody's values are escalating rapidly, and we're certainly not going to be millionaires overnight, but for those that are in the real estate industry, should be encouraged that you can build a spec home in the City of Freeport. Everybody can make a few bucks, and it's good for the increment. And I think it's important to note that this council and former Mayor Jim Gitz were one of the first residential enterprise zones to be put in place, and we did that unanimously with great support with so many people. So, that's all I got.
Alderman Clem.
I'll use my usual statement that I do every year, remember, if you don't vote, you can't bitch. So, please.
Very good statement.
Please, go out and vote. It's, keep in mind, I say that kidding, but it's the only right we really have left, and many of us fought for that right, and please exercise it tomorrow. A couple of things, Randy, I appreciate you bringing up, and you always do, the great work of your staff. As you know, we've had a couple people, or one person in there that's been there for years, that has really been a mainstay and is, is great help to, as we have switched through the different accountants and the different, going to city manager and stuff, we appreciate, really appreciate all the work you guys do, and, and thank you for that. And just to add a little bit to what the mayor said, keep in mind, the Salvation Army is not only in need of 300 man-days worth of bell ringers with their seven or eight places that they have, that they're doing good on getting people, also need extra help in the Thanksgiving time for preparation of meals and, and boxes and that stuff as they pass out. They've been with them, with us for 133 years, and they provide a lot of good to the community of, for people that can slip through the cracks on some other programs. So, please think of them at this time in, in the holiday season. Thank you.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. I joined Alderman Parker's comments to the chief and on his department's significant street value amounts, particularly on that cocaine and heroin, so well done, and keep up the good work. And then, I joined everyone else's comments, just go out and vote.
Thank you. Next is public comment. Tommy.
Do you remember, you missed Loser Heating Company, my 15 anniversary at Loser Heating.
I did miss it, Tommy, and we are all proud of your 15 years, so congratulations.
If you hear something, Randy, did you hear about the old Both Eagle Store?
I'm sorry, Ty, I'm interrupting your question.
I mean, oh, one.
Andrew. Andrew.
Are you referring to the ICSC show Rebecca Motley and myself went to last month, hopefully find tenants for the Two Eagle Stores and several other vacant retail locations around Freeport? Yes.
And one, so, Tom, Tom Buckle, you do a good job blessing a whole bunch of people. You do, and we want to keep you at the police station.
Thank you, Tommy. Lee.
My name is Lee Butler. I live at 1550 Woodside Drive here in Freeport, Illinois. I am a little bit discouraged about the road conditions we have in Freeport. We have a lot of potholes, and we have some roads that need to be repaired, upgraded, especially Woodside Drive. It could really lose some, use of tender loving care. However, the, the good part about the potholes and the rough road is, it slows the traffic down, because you have to look at the road and kind of steer around all those holes, but we hope the city will do something to, I mean, not just Woodside Drive, there's other streets in Freeport also that need help, and potholes all over. And so, use that pothole website. The city has the website out there where you can log in and report a pothole and get it filled, and so, hopefully, we can get some of our roads repaired and make Freeport look a little bit better. Thank you.
Thank you, Lee. Bernie.
Couple of quick things. I admire Alderman Clem's comment, if you don't vote, you can't bitch. Well, I'm going to bitch. Sorry about that. One thing I must impress upon on the audit, it's due at the end of October. It's got to be done by a bonding covenant on City Hall, so we cannot go be like we had in the past, months behind. Also, in this particular audit, something that's kind of disturbing, in 2015, you had a $9.7 million positive net position in the statement of net assets. 2016, it dropped to 13.2 million negative. 2017, we're down to 17.6 million. 2018, we dropped to $25 million. That's about $1,000 per resident to get cleaned up. Most of it is driven by our pension issues and some things that I brought up in the past. One of the good things about this is you changed the discount rate. That's appreciated, because now we can pay some real serious attention to this liability that's going to be facing us in the near future. So, the second thing that kind of is a little disturbing is the discussion on the $10,000 for Frank's car wash. I kind of think that that is kind of anti-business. It's small. It doesn't give a good indication that the city really wants to help small businesses that are located here in town. I think we've got to do more, be more creative, and find ways to not only help Frank, but the other, if we help one, one car wash, we need to think in terms of helping the others as well. We need to grow internally, instead of try and look for business from outside coming in, and there's a possibility that we can grow internally. Having said that, I think everything was done. I know what he's going through when he's going through the audit, so I do appreciate the work. Okay? But we do have problems coming, if we don't pay attention. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Tom?
As we all know, tomorrow, we'll bring one election to halt, and we'll all wake up on Wednesday morning and say, geez, I didn't think that was going to happen, or, you know, that did happen. But I'd like to make an announcement now because of the timeframe of things that will take place for the next election that people will be involved in. So, I address this letter that I'm going to read to the citizens of Freeport. Monday, November 19th, 2018, will be the first day to file petitions for the upcoming aldermatic election. I have served as a First Ward Alderman since 2005, and is with great pleasure to serve the ward. I have chosen not to run for another term, but to instead focus more time with my family, visiting our grandchildren and relaxing. I strongly encourage anyone interested in being part of the city council and future of the Freeport to consider running for this position. I found the experience to be extremely rewarding, and am hopeful that the next alderman will bring a great deal of enthusiasm to the, to the position and a great resource for the First Ward. This year, there will be six wards up for reelection. Keep this in mind. This will undoubtedly be one of the most important elections of our time due to the issues the next city council will face. It is an excellent opportunity to be part of shaping Freeport's future. The positions that will be up are as follows. First Ward, Tom Clem. Third Ward, Art Ross. Fourth Ward, Don Parker. Fifth Ward, Patrick Busker. Seventh Ward, Mike Keister. And Alderman-at-Large, currently held by Andrew Chesney. I would like to thank all the residents for the First Ward for your support throughout the years, and I'm still passionate about doing what is best for the City of Freeport. I look forward to supporting the next alderman and continue to make this ward a great place to be and Freeport a great place to be. So, I just wanted to lay this out now, so anybody that's interested in running could please plan for it and do so. And I thank you. I'll be here till April, there's no doubt about that, but at the end of April, that'll be 22 years that I've served, so I appreciate it, and every one of us should volunteer and serve our community. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, last on the agenda is number 19, the executive session. Madam Clerk, could you please read this into the record?
Pursuant to 5 ILCS 122C11 litigation, when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before court or administrative tribunal, or when a public body finds that an action is probable or imminent, in which case, the basis for the finding shall be recorded and entered into the minutes of the closed meeting. Pursuant to 5 ILCS 122C21, discussion of minutes lawfully closed under this act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated by Section 2.06, this item will have action to follow. Pursuant to 5 ILCS 122C1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, meaning to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the Local Government Wage Increase Transparency Act, may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with this act.
Thank you. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Second. There's a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Brashaw, to enter into executive session. Madam Clerk, could you please take the rule?
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Busker.
Aye.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Keister.
Aye.
Chesney.
Aye.
Clem.
Aye.
And McLanathan.
Aye.
That motion passes eight to zero.